Gavel.
Be late.
Also, I was.
Yes.
Well.
Get David over there, I'll color it with the name of the shoes.
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
You put starts.
All right. Good evening and welcome. Sorry for the delay, but we had some other business to take care of, so. Like to call tonight's meeting to order. We have met official compliance with all notifications. Go call, please.
Nick Olson.
Here.
Brooke Taylor.
Here.
Sarah Schuber McCone.
Here.
Laura Gabst.
Yeah.
Gallagher.
Here.
President Steve Olson.
Here.
Nick Schumacher here.
This is our committee of the whole meeting for tonight, Monday, March third, two thousand twenty-five. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business, and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for comments by members of the public during the meeting as indicated on the agenda. Members of the public wishing to address the board on any of the topics included on tonight's agenda may do so by signing up on the public comment signup sheet by the entrance prior to the start of the meeting. Board requests refraining from making any comments involving personally identified information about students, staff, or administration. Comments should be respectful, focused on the items being considered by the board, and will be restricted to three minutes in length. Action taken at today's meeting is to forward recommendations for final approval at the next regular school board meeting on Monday, March seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five. First is comments by members of the public. Do we have anything in? We shall move to our agenda. I would like to make notification that we are going to change into the order of the agendas tonight. We do have a presentation about an audit, and we'd like to move, as you look at your committee of the whole reports, the board committee reports number three shall be number one. We would then move to Amy's report number two, and then policies and rules will be number three. So to lead off, our board committee reports budget insurance committee.
That's me.
Yes.
Okay, I got two action items, uh, gifts, grants, and bequests. Administration recommends approval to accept gifts, grants, and bequests received in February of twenty twenty-five.
Motion to approve.
I am.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Can we see it?
Uh. A little technical difficulty here. Second.
Well, thank you.
Mine falls up. Yeah, I don't know why it's. I can read a lot too. It's not super long.
I just think we could just say that we have two or four in the. Can we read them, Brooke?
Yeah.
Let's do that.
Jesse Hurtig. I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing that. Benevity donation for five hundred dollars all night grad party. Another donation from them for six thousand forty-four dollars and thirty-two cents for boys hockey. Did we get it? Okay, perfect. I can stop.
There it is. Thank you, Brooke. If a motion in a second, no more discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both none, motion carries. Our second action item is the annual donation to Scholarship Foundation. Administration recommends approval of the annual donation in the amount of one thousand dollars to the District Superior Scholarship Foundation Incorporated Student Activities Fund.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both, motion carries. I have no discussion items and informational items. Here comes our audit of the twenty-three, twenty-four financial statements.
All right, good evening. Uh, can my audio coming through okay?
Yes, thanks.
Perfect. All right. Um, I'll be brief. Looks like you're a little, uh, got your work cut out for you tonight on, uh, timing wise, so I'll keep my comments brief, but if you had any questions coming into today, absolutely take those as we go along here. Louis, I'm gonna walk you through a, a, a quick two-page summary of the audit results for twenty twenty-four. I'm Brock Guyan, principal in charge of your annual external audit. Uh, maybe first thank finance and administration for all the help that goes into preparing for an audit. Uh, you're one of the larger districts in the state, and there's just a lot, there's a lot going on, a lot of grants, a lot of transactions. Do a nice job, um, pulling all that together for us. So with that, um, I'm gonna try to share my screen and the two-page handout, which hopefully is in your packets. Um. See if this works here. Let me know if you see that on the screen there, top of the first page of the two-page handout.
Yes.
Perfect. Okay. So, uh, the way this is broken up, similar to prior years, if you've seen this before, um, the top section, section one, talks about the reports we issue in conjunction with the, uh, with the audit, and then the second half of the first page and the second page talk about the numbers, so I'll get to that in a minute. Uh, first cover the reports we issued. So we issued an unmodified opinion. It's the, uh, highest level you can receive. It's what you strive for. Actually, DPI requires that, so thankfully, there's nothing that, uh, caused problems with the amounts or disclosures in there that we'd have to have additional language. That is different than a management letter. At the end of the financial statement, there's, uh, what's called a schedule of findings. Very common for school districts in Wisconsin to have something in there, and two of the first, uh, two, the first two here that I list, uh, limited segregation of duties and material audit adjustments, those are extremely common. Most all of my clients receive all these. It's common for us as external auditors to propose adjustments to your books. If we do that, it's kind of an automatic thing across the industry if, um, because be, because we can't be a part of your internal control structure. We can help you adjust it at the end of the year, and if we do that, we just have to disclose that here in the management letter portion. Um, segregation of duties, for those less familiar maybe, uh, think of it this way. Um, you don't necessarily have a team of CPAs on hand in your finance office to segregate all, uh, accounting functions the way we would like to see it happen. Uh, that's receipts, dispersments, payroll, journal entries. There's a lot of different ways to impact the numbers, and, uh, so you have very few people that have, uh, uh, several responsibilities. And what the, what's like, when, when that's the case, it ends up being here in your management letter. Again, very, very common, um, even for the largest, uh, clients of mine, like counties, for example, they still receive this as well. You do what you can with the controls you have in place, and, and you as a board, maybe it's more of an annual reminder that you do have a role in this with your approvals. Um, the third one, cash and investment reconciliations. This one pops up occasionally throughout our client base. Uh, it's a repeat of last year, so a two-year period here where, um, we helped out with the bank reconciliation process to get the numbers tied out, and, uh, um, something you're working on, and I actually don't anticipate this being ongoing into twenty twenty-five. So you have thing, you have, uh, things in the works now to help, uh, mitigate that issue. Working down slightly, there's a section on compliance, because we do also, in, in addition to auditing the numbers, we're looking at compliance with grants and contracts, and we have nothing to report there. There's no findings as a result of that testing. All right, now I'll move, move you on to some of the numbers. I give you a four-year trend here, so you can kind of see how things are, are progressing, and I won't talk about all the numbers either, but, because there's kind of a lot going on. What I'll focus in on here is the second to last year, where it's called change in fund balance. That is the results for the year. Did you come out with, uh, did revenues exceed expenses or the other way around? And you do see a positive trend here. That's good. So you came out ahead of the game by a little over a million dollars, um, better than your expenses. So revenues exceeded expenses. Might on the surface seem like a big number, but bear with me here for a second, because the trend is pretty consistent with way, uh, the, the size of the district and, and the, the changes. So I'm gonna measure, um, the financial health of the district by moving you up slightly. Hopefully, I don't know if you can see my cursor or not, but you're gonna look at this unassigned fund balance number, seventeen million. That is your unassigned reserves. That's what you have to live on going into the next year, seventeen million. I compare that to what you spent. The sixty-four million dollar figure here, and you get this ratio at the bottom. You can see, even though you did have a nice increase in your total, uh, overall fund balance due to positive results, this, this ratio didn't change a whole lot. Stayed very consistent with last year. Uh, that's because your expenses increased quite a bit, so you're, you're pacing, you're keeping pace with, uh, the increase in your expenses to maintain this level of financial health. Our general rule of thumb is you want to maintain a minimum. It's not necessarily target. Yeah, you try not to go below it. Otherwise, you end up, school districts tend to have cash flow problems if they do, but something between twenty-five and thirty-three percent. So certainly right in there, kind of on the lower end of that scale even. Um. And I'd say the app, that more average, and again, we, we work with over a hundred districts across the state of Wisconsin. Uh, that average is closer to twenty-nine percent, but right in the ballpark there as well. I'll move you to page two, and here we're just looking at your year-end fund balance numbers by, uh, by fund, about all the details on the balance sheet. First section, section three, um. You're really looking for trends here. Is it increasing, decreasing? And one thing you'll notice here is, uh, food service, for example, is down a little bit, but still has pretty strong fund balance reserves of just under one point three million. And you'll see a large increase here in your fund twenty-one. Uh, you may or may not re- recall, but you had an uncommonly large donation received during twenty twenty-four, so that will by, uh, will naturally increase your balance of reserves at year end. Moving down, we got your debt service fund. Uh, during the year, you paid nine point eight million in principal and interest during twenty twenty-four, and, uh, most of that was covered with budgeted revenues, but you did have to use some reserves there, about ninety-six thousand to, uh, fill in the gap uh, to pay all the principal and interest. So still plenty left there. There's one point two million available to you for future budgets for principal and interest. Section five is your capital projects funds. This is the, uh, round out the rest of your funds here. You've got fund forty-nine is the first one listed. Uh, the only activity in there is earning some interest. It's, it's sat idle otherwise, so you earned about thirty-seven thousand. And then, uh, fund forty-six is your more active fund, that second one listed there, and you did, uh, spend down. Um. You did spend about one point three million on capital costs. You had some revenues in there, a little bit of revenues, and you did have, uh, a spend down. It's a, it's the intent of this one. It's to work your capital plan. The last section I'll talk about here, uh, is a summary of your long-term obligations. You'll note a net decrease in this top section of general obligation debt. That's your tax-supported debt. Uh, as I mentioned before, you did have nine point eight million of principal and interest. Of that, seven point four million was principal reduction, and you only had one new net, uh, sorry, one new debt issued during there. It was a note in the amount of five hundred and fifty-four thousand. So the net of those got you down, uh, from seventy-five million down to just under uh, sixty-eight million in outstanding general obligation debt. I'll go through the rest of these here. These are some of the other long-term obligations. These are benefit plans. These are leased lease items. Uh, one item that's gonna look a little unusual is this WRS row here, so I want to just point that out quick. These are negative numbers. That's not a, that's not a typo. Um, this is a, a measurement of your district's portion, the small portion of the overall WRS pension plan that the state administers. So we get a bunch of data. We bring it into your report at the end of the year. Uh, here in twenty-one and twenty-two, the, the plan was overfunded. There was an asset out there that all the participants, um, brought on their books. You had this, uh, it's not something you could cash out, but it was an asset of the, your portion of the plan, um, plan asset. That swung the other way during twenty twenty-three and remains a liability here in twenty twenty-four, so that's why it's a, it's a positive number. It's a little counterintuitive. We're, we're talking about liabilities in this section, so it is, uh, a liability. Again, you're not gonna have to pay checks for this. You pay your WRS benefit in your payroll as you go. It's just something to keep, uh, keep an eye on, and the moral story is, uh, it's a very big plan, and here in Wisconsin, the, the pension and the life insurance, the one right above it, those are well-funded plans, so we don't have too much to worry about there. They're gonna have tweak the rates they charge every year a little bit, but we don't have a situation like other states where there's, it's a poorly funded plan, and they have issues to deal with. So, all, all in all, good news there. Last thing I'll talk about or comment on is this percentage at the bottom, and that's just a measurement of the statutory limit on tax-supported debt. I mentioned above your GO debt. That's tax-supported debt, the sixty-eight million. Um, there is a, a limit to how much you can hold, and, uh, if you go above that, you have to go to referendum. Well, you're at nineteen percent of that limit, so you have no worries there if you needed to, uh, borrow with levy-supported debts, uh, here in the near future. So with that, I will pro, conclude my comments and just open it up to see if you had any questions for me.
Questions?
Riveting, Brock. Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you.
Yep. Have a good evening.
If there's anything you want to add?
Yeah, so look, I'm bringing, uh, one working with Brock. Brock's from the location with us, um, you know, he's in the position, hundred percent turnover in the, uh, in the business office, so, um, you know, he's been an asset to somebody you can reach out to and work through those situations. Um, the big thing is, you know, when you look at it, since you look at it, hey, a million dollars, you brought your million dollars. Spent less than expenses, but like Brock said, that money is our, our fund balance. Make sure we're gonna be healthy, continue to be healthy. Um. We're at the lower end of where we kind of want to be, but some healthy, healthy spot. Um. I anticipate, I hope we contribute again to that this year. Um, it's gonna be the following years where it's gonna be really, really difficult to contribute to that fund balance, um, to the point that you might have to draw on it. And that's one thing. I, I hope we don't have to do that, but that's why it's there. That's, that's to get us through those rough spots, and with everything going on on the stage. Um, there could be some, there could be some rough spots ahead of us.
And federal level.
And the federal level, yes, in, you know, three years, four years from now. So that's kind of why we're, we're asked, um, trying to get that front balance. Um, but again, it's been a, it's been a learning experience as far as, like, it is extremely complex, the entries that we make between sliding between funds and various steps. So, but again, I really appreciate Brock and Amy, yes. I get room for the CPAs that come and help me, so they've been, uh, they've been, they've been great. I think, uh, we got this audited out two months earlier than last year, and I hope we get it out two months earlier this year, so we can get back to some of that.
Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Good night.
Good night.
One last informational item, Fund Ten Revenue and Expenditure, preliminary reports. We're not quite knowing numbers. Do you have any thoughts?
Uh, so we got a big check on the taxes last month. We're gonna do a big check on state equalization union in at the end of this month, and then we're not gonna pay money for a while, so we're gonna spike out on revenue. I'll move the money around, so we can collect some interest off of that, and then, uh, we'll slowly trickle down, and the goal is not to use our, um, the way I'm up there, our line of credit. You guys will see that line of credit coming up again, because I'm gonna, my goal is either if you're made to go through the budget from you guys, you could do that. And the month after that, we'll set up another line of credit, and then going forward will be the line of credit every, probably July. So this heard completely from the last two months.
Any other comments, questions?
Thank you for my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. Next, our report from our superintendent.
Uh, I have just one informational item. Mr. Fezzi's here to give us high school updates.
Thank you. And that's it. I, I try to be brief. Hey, there we go. Um, some celebrations. I would like to start off, you know, with good. Uh, we're starting, continuing to see, uh, improvement in the rate at which, uh, students are passing their classes. Um, a little over ninety-five percent of the classes that were taken at Superior High School uh, in semester one, um, were passed by, you know, by our students. Uh, so we're continuing to see improvement in that area, uh, which obviously, as we push and, and work toward, uh, graduation, uh, that's, that's a good, good thing to see. Uh, I think, you know, I've heard from our staff and I've heard from our students, you know, the, the connections that our staff are making, the overall improvements in, uh, the atmosphere and climate, so I'll talk a, a few things there. Um. We continue to see a decrease in our significant behaviors, you know, physical things, illegal, uh, illegal things. Uh, we're, we're seeing a pretty significant, uh, reduction in, in those, which obviously is good, as we're looking affects the climate and the safety of the building. And one other thing I wanted to, to point out, which was pretty cool, uh, ECP, the Academic and Career, uh, Planning Element, the thing, and, you know, within DPI, that, that spans across the district level, starts in elementary school right up, um, until now they graduate. Um, we've done a lot of work with our, uh, education, uh, our employment plan. Um, you know, we've, we've met, met quite a bit. Uh, we're doing a lot of things at, at the high school level. Caitlin Knoll has done a great job of, uh, if you, you see, it seems like we have a career fair once a month. We have students going and, and checking out colleges and checking out trades, and she's organizing so many different opportunities, uh, for our students to see, to see what's out there and, and to be exposed. Um, uh, DPI reached out to us and identified our plan as an exemplar, uh, something that they want to use, uh, highlight on the website and, and show off to others as a model for, for what this could, could look like. And, uh, obviously, as we're looking, you know, to graduation and, uh, for, for our students to be prepared for what's next, uh, giving those explorations and opportunities, uh, I think are huge, and, uh, I'm, I'm excited about, you know, the work, you know, that we've got going on there. Uh, you know, I mentioned, I mentioned the, uh, the climate and some of the things. Our newest staff member stops by on Mondays, uh, she's a, um, she's a therapy dog in training from the police department, so Millie stops by. She's a, she's a hit with, uh, with our, with our students, a student.
She visits me weekly too, so. She visits me.
You can see her, dude. I actually had a student, uh, student tell me, uh, it was maybe two Mondays ago. I came to school today, because Millie's gonna be here, right? I was like, wow, whatever, whatever it takes. You get to hang out with Millie. Um, middle, uh, during our recent staff development, we played a scooter bocce ball with our staff, so we were having fun sliding across some parts of gym floor, uh, and, uh, the other two pictures there on the right were from our recent Unity Day. Uh, we broke out the old, uh, elementary FIAID parachute, uh, it was one of the activities, and uh, a bunch of big, big hip high school kids, uh, and then let me see, uh, one of our, Mr. Daniger, one of our students, uh, student challenged him to a, a cook-off with, uh, multiple categories, uh, so he was part of our Unity Day as well.
Like I am chef.
Yeah, I kind of, yeah, I volunteered to do taste testing, so I think I was the winner.
All your staff members were under the parachute as well.
Uh, we, there were, there were some at times, yeah, and, and actually, uh, Gunnar Johnson, who were newer FIAID teachers. It was rain and wet, was right, and he did that. He had three or four rotations of, of the parachute, so, yeah, had some good, good times there. Um. The school challenges, um, we're still, uh, seeing our mental health challenges really put a strain on, on our resources. We talk to our teachers, we talk to our counselors, our deans, and principals. Uh, a lot of what we're doing day in and day out is, you know, obviously, first and foremost, is supporting our students and, and their needs. Uh, it does, it does stretch us, and, and we do, we do a lot of that, um, you know, and, you know, it, it feels sometimes like, you know, some of the other things that we need to do, you know, you know, take a, take a backseat, but, you know, that's reality of where we are and, and the support, uh, that, that our students and our community need. Um, our numbers have gotten better. Uh, we're still seeing truancy, uh, as, as a significant challenge. We've got, uh, a decent number of less, you know, percentage, less truant students this year than we had last year. Uh, we're still seeing numbers, numbers too high in the upper teens, uh, of percentage of our students who are, you know, would meet that definition of habitual truancy, uh, working in support of, you know, it's no secret that, that these three things are all, all connected, uh, to one another. Um. The, the overall instances of vaping, uh, are gone, have gone down. What we've seen is, is a pretty significant increase in the amount, uh, amount of vapes that are, are THC vapes. So we're seeing less, less volume of vapes coming through. Uh, we're seeing, uh, about three years ago, uh, it was less than five percent of the vapes were THC. Uh, we're now, we're now seeing thirty-something percent of, of the vapes, um, containing THC, which obviously, uh, a lot of, a lot of the connections and, uh, the challenges we're facing and, and, and trying to, you know, clean it up and keep it out of the building, uh, but also, you know, support those, you know, who are, who are struggling, uh, with it. So again, continues to be, um, something that we're putting a lot of efforts in. Um, shifting gears to our, to our goal, uh, our, our main goal, our area of greatest need, as I talked to last time we were here, that we identified was around a math achievement in the ACT. Um, and when I talk about our action steps here momentarily, we've, well, we're focused on math and some of the strategies. We really, as a staff, tried to, uh, approach this as, um, building-wide and, and, uh, rigor-wise in terms of the ACT, looking at the type, the type of questions and the level of questions that students face on the ACT. Um, and bumping up the engagement, the productive struggle, uh, the higher level tasks. So a, a lot of our, uh, our focus within our professional development has been there. Uh, as we've worked, uh, worked through the, the year in, in our professional development, some of the things we've done. Um, one of the things that our staff responds really positively, uh, to and ha, continuing, has in the past, continues to, is when our professional development is homemade, and it's our teachers demonstrating, you know, things that they're doing and, and having an opportunity to, to talk with one another, collaborate, uh, build some things, tweak some things within their lessons. Uh, you know, it was really a big focus in our last staff development. This isn't, this isn't a wholesale change. This isn't, what we're doing is wrong. This is how can we, how can we up the rigor? How can we make these more engaging, uh, for our students? So as we've worked through that, um, our last staff development, we had a little mini circuit where our teachers had an opportunity to, to check in and, and go to different classrooms and see what it looks like in different spaces and different subjects. Uh, and also an opportunity to, you know, to talk to one another and, you know, and, uh, fifteen-year veteran teacher telling me that they'd never been in one of our art rooms before, so to see, you know, to see them experience, uh, a mini art lesson, but also be able to take back, uh, some of, you know, what that art teacher was doing, uh, to engage her students. Um, a lot of our work, BTC stands for Building Thinking Classrooms. Uh, it is higher-level engagement, it's, um, higher rigor, it's productive struggle, working through, um, more, more elevated type of tasks, which also are what you experience on the ACT, you know, those level two and three depth of knowledge, um, questions.
Aaron, can I interject it?
Yeah.
I, I think one of the things I've, I've shared with Aaron and others, it's, it's not normal for teachers to feel that level of comfort, to be able to go and observe each other, and that is a testament, I think, to the culture of that high school, that they, um, are eager to demonstrate their lessons, and people are eager to go into each other's classrooms. That's a culture you have to create, and so I think that's really, uh, it's been, it's been a good positive, um, move, and I think teachers enjoy learning from other teachers as opposed to others, so I think that's, nice job.
The other bullet I had on there, AI and the ACT, we've tried to, you know, we hear the, the negatives of AI and, you know, how students can use it to, to cheat and things like that. Uh, we've also tried to harness it and, and use it, uh, use it to support students. Um, some of the things that some of the AI tools will do, you can enter prompts, you know, so I mentioned that depth of knowledge, those higher-level tasks. You can take some of the things that you're currently teaching and ask, uh, ask the different AI tools to give you a passage and to generate around this topic and to generate higher-level thinking questions for, for students to, you know, to address. So we, we've been spending some time and, you know, and obviously looking into our general classroom instruction, and, and then how that, that connects to the ACT. So that was our main, you know, our, our main focus in the past. We've had two goals, uh, you know, uh, an academic and a cultural goal. Well, we don't formally have that cultural goal this year. Uh, that is something that our shared leadership team feels strongly about and has put some effort into. Uh, so a couple of the things. Feel strongly about and has put some effort into, uh so a couple of the things. Call them a cultural group for the rest, lack of a better term, we've kind of split up when we're in our uh shared leadership meetings. Uh our, our building culture group is done, is, you know, has created some of the activities we've done to have some fun. But it's also uh spearheading the campaign to reach out to community and graduates and we wanna. We wanna, we wanna show representation and and show, show our students. The people who came before them and superior and some of the amazing things that they've done, uh so we're, we're starting, you know, we're. Get it up on our TVs, we're, we're looking to uh create signage and things like that to really um highlight, focus on some of our. Again, representation, not just, not just our alums, who are federal judges, but you know, who are, who are doing all kinds of cool things. Uh around the community and around the world, uh they're also, their next thing they want to take on is, again, that. Bridging that gap and continuing to build a relationship with staff and uh and students. Um they're looking to create um some profiles, you know, we're gonna do in our next, next staff development. Uh kind of do a profile, get some profile information for all of our staff. Um from from teachers to support staff, to kitchen staff, uh and everybody and and really. Uh great signage in all of our offices, our rooms, our spaces, that says who we are, uh you know, have a picture. Highlighting where we came from, what our backgrounds are and and really working to continue to build, you know, strengthen those connections, because you know. Uh how important they are. Well, that's what we've been up to, you know, it's been that long since I've been here to speak and kind of a snake draft, I kind of got the. You know, the end of the first round and towards the beginning of the of the second round, but. Do you have any questions?
You know, I ask this often, uh but do you see any trends with truancy, or are they kind of all over the place or you know?
Um yeah, trends are, I guess I can speak, we're, we're lower than we have been, but I mean, it's. Everybody's stories, I mean, yeah, you can put things into some trends, is this a um. Is this a transportation thing, is this a um supporting a family member who's got a health issue, you know, you. You definitely can see some trends, but you also see dozens of. Unique personal stories, you know, and it's trying to, trying to connect with them, connect with the families and you can see how we can. Help, you know, eliminate any barriers.
In regards to uh vaping, I know there's only so much we can do, um. Do we need vape detectors in the bathrooms, do we need C I's, what we need?
We have vape detectors, they go off all day long.
We have it, we have vape detectors, and we're gonna talk about search and seizure in a different time. Uh it's, you know, they're this big, you know, and. I can stash them in a lot of places and hit them quick and even with the vape detectors. Um if you, the vape detector is on the back, back corner, and if you go to the front stall, takes about forty seconds before that. Works its way back there, so you've.
We've tried the education piece too, Jay Larson.
The education piece is our biggest, you know, is, is our biggest tool and our biggest front and continue to. Work with our students and I think we've, here I've talked about some community things, and we were just in a community meeting the other day. How we can continue to, you know, community educate about, you know, about them and. Arm our students with the right knowledge.
I know one of the concerns that I've seen from parents is, you know, their kids are hesitant to use the bathroom because of the vape detectors and. And the stuff that happens in the bathrooms, do you find that, because I've heard that, you know, if a student is in there and they go off and they're automatically searched, even if it's not them. Do you find that kids are pretty, I guess, open and and trying to be helpful, or do they?
They are, they're just like, I give you this.
Cause it's a bummer, I mean.
It is.
Cues, but.
Kind of divided on the.
Yeah.
Vape detector, at times I've turned them off, but at times turn back on, you know, like it, it's a tool, but it's.
Yeah, but it's, but but when you got like three kids lined up in a stall next to each other, you know what I'm saying, and I'm there on Wednesdays, so I see it every Wednesday morning. Right, so, right, and then they're behind a closed door and you need to ensure private, it's just, there's a lot of challenges, yeah.
To try to combat it, to say we're going to, we're gonna.
Wipe it up.
We're gonna discipline it out of the building is, it's not the, you know, is not the. The effort that's gonna be successful, obviously, we, when we see it, we address it, you know, and and we deal with it, but it's, it's on the front end and the education. That's gonna, that's gonna ultimately be, be what's gonna be the most success.
My, my other question or topic is, is about A I stuff, you know, I went to a presentation, a conference regarding A I and. The need for policies.
Yeah.
For staff and students, um I'm just curious if, are our staff catching the use of A I right now, seeing it in?
Yes, some of it, um. Uh if we get some of it, uh we have a turnit.com, which a lot of our teachers use. Um when you're turning in, you know, a a piece of writing, uh that does have A I detection, so it will. Eighty seven percent of this was A I generated, uh there are tools, there are tools like that, again. Um that's another thing that the front end education of, and you know, I think we're looking as teachers, how we. How we structure our assignments to, to maybe make them A I proof, you know, a- as well, like, you know, if you're. If you're asking a kind of a, a common, a common thing, what are the causes of the Civil War? A I can create you a great essay about, you know, something, something like that, but. You know, maybe you focus in and you're using a specific text and things like that, uh A I doesn't have the ability to pull, you know, all those things, so. Yeah, I think it's, you know, policy, I know, Aaron and the future ready side of things, they've been doing a lot of work on both ends. Uh student, student side of things and uh us as the employee side of things, it's how we, how we utilize it. In a good way, and and but.
We have talked about policy development, it's changing so quickly that uh I think our plan is the next fall to bring something. Or something in the next six months or so, we've talked about that.
Same. Academic integrity and safe and ethical use of technology really, really applied to all this, so luckily, we do have lots of great policies already in place. And you want, you know, what we're working on is just to continue to to do that education piece, but then also offer some more guidelines that are. More specific to like A I examples.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Um I have, okay, from here. Uh I got a couple of other things that we'll bring forward at our regular uh meeting, uh not next Monday, we have spring break next week, so we'll, we'll meet on. March seventeenth, and then we have one action item, we have an annual field trip uh from Northland up for senior retreat.
Motion to approve.
Oh, motion in a second, yeah.
I'm sorry.
No, that's not you. There's a motion in a second to approve the overnight field trip for the Northland Senior Retreat, is there any further discussion?
This might be a dumb question, maybe not. Um. Students and staff going on an overnight, is there? Like, it lists all men as chaperones, is it all males on the overnight, is there females, is there a representation of a female staff member, in case something goes on?
Spencer, I was gonna say, I think the whole other staff is going.
Those stupid questions, huh?
Not really, yeah.
All right, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. O's, motion carries. That concludes that report, thank you very much, we are going to, I'll shift gears. Earlier to the Policies and Rules Committee, Mr. Gallagher.
All right, administration proposes the approval of changes to the following policy based on Neola recommendations in order to be in compliance with federal law. Updates. The first and only action item is the first reading of Policy five, seven, seven, one, search and seizure.
This was tabled in the October uh meeting, and since then, I've talked to both principals at the middle and the high school, they're here tonight. We haven't made any changes from the original proposal, there may be questions specific to this, but they can, I, I, after you take a mo- after you get motioned, if I'd like them to. Kind of talk through how this looks.
Uh can you get a motion?
Motion to approve.
A motion.
Second.
And a second, discussion.
Can you guys talk a little bit about what this looks like in reality in your world?
Yeah, so we just. Review kind of how we operate on a pretty regular basis, because we want to make sure that we can follow the policies that we have in place, but also. You know, what's best for our kids and our students and and how we're, how we're gonna do things, so. But we're even considering a search of a student, maybe it's a suspected of a, you know. Something dangerous or whatnot, we, it's a probable cause and and evidence to do that, it's not like. Now we suspect something vaguely, and so we, we talk about as an admin team, we're looking at searching somebody, how we can block them and that. Uh we need to have some. Pretty good reasonable cause to.
What would a search look like, though? Like, if you were, if you suspected somebody had something, what would that look like? And how are, how are police, how are your S R O involved in that?
Yeah, so if, if, if we suspect somebody of having, let's say, a vape. Um we'll, we'll pull the S R O in, we'll ask, you know. Ask permission to do a quick search and S R O will use a wand and it'll. Alert that there's anything metal in other person, sometimes the kids just empty their pockets and show us if the S R O is not available. We don't do anything invasive at all. Um. That's really the thing, I mean, the other part of the search component is of their belongings and such, so the lockers are ours, but the stuff inside their locker. Belongs to their personal property, so again, we'll generate a question, ask permission to search through their belongings. But if there's a suspected, you know, weapon or something serious about. We need to ask for permission. The problem cause and then the serious, seriousness of the, of the situation, we believe is serious.
What happens if they say no? When you ask.
There's regional suspicion, yeah, the, the courts have said we still have the authority. To search, uh we see, you know, sometimes, you know, high schools, they can drive themselves and this is something that. We've wrestled with as to how to proceed with, there's some, I think, maybe it's just around the breath, breathalyzer aspect of this, but. What if they refuse the search, we now have students who know they're caught, so they just, just run out the door. Um so, um you know, you, yeah, they're now leaving, they're skipping, you know, but they're. But you haven't had the opportunity to, to search them and uh you know, again, this is, this is more on. Um, you know, a vape side of things, obviously, it's a suspicion, a suspicion of a dangerous weapon, police officer. Or S R O would say, we'll follow up.
In most cases, the S R O is working in conjunction with the schools, not necessarily on their own, you know, so.
Not the two court bundle job, but the courts have said for, for schools, we have, we need a reasonable suspicion. Suspicion, which is a lower threshold than what a police officer needs to get with probable cause. But then the police, our S R O officer can assist us, I mean, we have that reasonable suspicion to conduct a school search. The S R O can take part of that in that, even though they may not have had the law enforcement. Bill of Rights, you know, side of things, but.
Homework in conjunction with those, that's, it's always good to have them, you know, if you're tired or maybe on those. Do those things, and the other side of the search piece is where we have. You know, two people and a, a part of that, so. We don't do it tongue, uh to be honest, but uh once the S R O pulls out the wand, that, that goes through school pretty quickly and things start.
I think the concern in October was around training and how comfortable, I mean, obviously, you guys are probably pretty comfortable, you've done it enough, but. The other administrators, um especially, you know, you got a couple of new ones, you know, what kind of training goes into that? Um are they brought in on those to train specifically on how to do that?
Training just happens at our Monday morning meeting, we talked about it against day, just. Discussing. Above policy, right, um usually that's policy with a, with a newer, newer person, which I have as well, it was. Observe the, you know, observe how we do this and then let's be brief as to the policy and the why and. Thanks, but, uh you know, it's our formal trainers, uh but.
We also don't do formal, like, searches, you know, we don't.
Very minimal.
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, before the wand, it's almost like.
Which is like, going back to the vaping example, the vaping detector goes off, there's one student in a stall, we ask the student to come out, we search their backpack, we ask them to empty their. Pockets, they may have it placed somewhere else, but that's where we don't know.
Yeah.
Aside from like weapons, is there any way that's like actually padding down, other than an S R O maybe?
All staff, I mean, it's such, you never touch somebody, you know, the S R O wouldn't touch someone for a suspected baby. Uh it would be a suspected weapon situation, and that would be an S R O. Probably an S R O and a few of us, or innocent, you know, you show up and give.
And is it safe to say that once, if you were, if I was a student that was suspected, that once you ask a student to. Empty their pockets, search their bag. Most of those students become very nervous, little bit reluctant, but lo and behold, you've had the suspicion, you've been spot on.
I'm doing this even though it's successful, right? My reasonable suspicion is very suspicious.
So you're probably at the problem.
Yeah, the, I think it's all, I don't wanna get into the weeds, but why are we working with? It's because somebody has seen something or like, it's not because, oh, it's Johnny again in the red. It's because of, we've gotten some good intel, but there's no reason. For me, for me, you know, not weapon type of situation of vape, but like. For me, another student saying someone has a vape is a reasonable suspicion for me, it probably would be the threshold, but I, I don't. Yes, for a description, if that's the case, I'll search someone based on student saying someone had a vape. Thank you, guys.
Any other questions, anybody?
I think it does get more, uh you know, puts more steps into it, but. Attended our legal seminar on, put on by our, so our Administrators Association and. They bring lawyers to talk to us and the, the process of, of the asking for written consent is what they. Is what they highly recommend now, it's, it's a procedure and it's adds steps to what we need to do, but. That, what, what Neola is proposing is really much, really, pretty much exactly in line with what. The lawyers they brought in to speak to our Administrators Association uh recommended as well.
And we talked with other districts, we're very much on the safe side of this policy. Yeah, here, what's other districts we're doing on, on this front?
And it seems like, I guess by policy, Superdime, Billion Principles, Assistant Principles, Life Corrective Resource Officer are the only ones searching. Or any staff?
No, no, not any staff, so I've been able to designate deans, I know it doesn't say that. In the writing of this policy, but I believe our old policy said, or principal goes in here, but.
Who else got any questions, comments?
Thank you guys for your clarifications.
Thank you.
Uh no further questions? All in favor, signify with Santa.
You can go.
You posed? All right, answers. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I have no discussion items and no information. I have no discussion items and no informational items.
Alright, we shall move on. Personnel Negotiations Committee, Brooke.
Great. I have a couple of action items today. Administration recommends approval of the March twenty twenty five new hires and separations report.
Motion approved.
Second.
Second, is there any discussion?
Is the plan, Molly, on the resignations with the counselor and Spanish teacher, and we'd be posting four next year?
We have to go back to the replacement list last year and re-solve some day and then Spanish teacher.
A couple of positions that will be starting to post here on the next week.
It's only been here a few years, right, Kayla?
Yeah.
Other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Administration recommends releasing Jennifer L's early childhood education teacher with the district from her twenty four twenty five school year contract. Per her request effective February twenty fifth, twenty five, with the liquidated damages provision enforced.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion and a second, is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Administration recommends releasing Mark Johnson's special education teacher from SHS from his twenty four twenty five school year contract. Per his request effective March seventh, twenty twenty five, with the liquidated damages provision enforced.
Motion approved.
Second.
Second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. I have no discussion items and no informational items. That ends my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Brooke. Next is Teaching and Learning Committee, Mr. Schumacher.
As soon as I find it.
In the mail, I know.
By first. Okay, no action, no discussion items, information, Jennifer Willoughby, Director of Early Childhood. Family Education, Indian Education Updates and Black History Month Update. Welcome, Jennifer.
Um, hello, sorry about my voice, you know, from your voice for a second. Um, I'll try and be brief though. Um, I see Ann has already pulled up the Bad Rivers screening, thank you. Um, this Thursday, March sixth, at the Superior High School in the pack. We will be showing the documentary about Bad River Tribe in Odena, which is near Ashland. Uh, many of our students. Are from the Bad River Tribe, um, but it's open to the public, um. And everyone's welcome to come, starts at six P M., doors open at five thirty. We'll have light refreshments after, there's. A discussion to follow as well. Um, and we're very excited because, um. There will be an introduction given by a Bad River elder, Robert Wool, uh, he was part of making the documentary. Uh, we're excited about that. There is free childcare, um, onsite as well. The documentary is, um, not rated, however, it's recommended for fourteen and up. Uh, we shared that information with families. Um, so we're offering, uh, free childcare. We've been working, uh, to get that secure as. Um, and then Martin Luther King Junior and Black History Month update, um. Monday, January twentieth was Martin Luther King Junior Day. Um, I shared these resources that Ian's pulling up, um, scrolling through. With teachers, uh, and staff a few weeks prior to that, um, so that they'd have access to that, uh, similar resources, similar. From what I shared in, um, November. Sorry, my train of thought here for a minute. Um, in addition, so I did get some information from high school's teachers and what's been happening there as well. High school students, um, read Martin Luther King's biography and analyzed his Eye of a Dream speech and discussed his letter from Birmingham Jail. Um, obviously this happened at all different grades and all different classes, so not every student did this. Um, so I'm just going to give you a, an update of what did happen. Um, in February for Black History Month, high school students learned about the civil rights movement of the fifties and sixties. Um, they watched film, they compared and contrasted, um, Martin Luther King Junior, Malcolm X's approaches. Discuss Emmett Till as a leading event, participated in photo analysis and compared the civil rights era to modern day, and they did much more. The B S U is a student, the Black Student Union is a student-led club that meets every week. Uh, they talk through issues both in school and in the community. They discuss po- potential events. Um, that they'd like to facilitate and build relationships. Lucas Hoffmacher is the advisor and he shared that the group has not yet wanted to. Fully commit to any events so far this year, so they've just been spreading awareness about the club to their peers. So that's what I have. Any questions?
Yeah, I was wondering, I went to the event at the deck, they didn't do the march because it was too cold this year, which is like the first time ever, but. Yeah, I saw like the Denfeld High School B S U, their president spoke and it was like really inspiring to see high schoolers up there, so. I just was wondering if our B S U was still active or doing anything too, so.
Yep, they're active, they're meeting, they're just.
Yeah.
I think it all kind of depends on the, uh, motivation of the group at the time, kind of what they want to engage in, like they've done some stuff at Juneteenth too and. So I think, yeah, we have an advisor and they do meet, but I think it kind of, we kind of lean on the group to cut, they want to get engaged, yeah.
Sure. Great, thank you.
That was all. Steve, thank you.
You're so efficient. Thank you. Alright, next our Operations Committee, Sarah.
No action items, no discussion items, two informational items. The Bryant Elementary Project for Tuck Point repairs and wind replacements is currently out for bid. The bids are due back on March tenth. Bid tabulations will be emailed to the board members that day for review and to ask questions as necessary for action at the March seventeenth regular board meeting. And then we have Technology and Cyber Security Update, Erin Schilling, Director of Information Technology. And Casey Smith, Technology Support Specialist.
Welcome.
Kind of like, welcome, you've got mail.
I know.
Kind of like early tech.
Yes, yes.
On the go chat. Um, hi, everybody. I'm Erin Schilling, this is Casey Smith. Um, we are just representing the the Technology Department. Um, and we also will speak a little bit to the Future Ready Team that Erin mentioned earlier today and our data privacy team as well. Um, so we have a technology vision that all students can be self-directed learners, who access, evaluate and apply the most effective tools and resources to flourish. As individuals and global citizens. And I remember, Brooke, we talked about this word flourish. This actually has been, um, a really longstanding technology vision. It's really been enduring, you know, even as. New things emerge, A I and things like that come up, we really, as a Future Ready Team, really like have leaned into this. And said, we really don't need to change much, but we did add this this idea of flourishing. So it came up i- in a conversation and we were working on. But everybody during that strategic planning time. So you'll recognize these as our district's, um, commitments. That are part of our strategic plan and our technology department really wanted to try to think about how we fit into this and how we could support this. Bigger district mission vision and all of these commitments. So with Kate's help, um, we actually. Made our own mission statement, our own vision statement, and then we chose four. Out of those same priorities from the strategic plan for the whole district to focus on with our department. So we chose safety, continuous improvement, communication and equitable decision-making. So the rest of this presentation is kind of focuses on each of those four commitments and how our teams really kind of highlight those. Um, so one thing on our list, um, is Seiji, we all agree that's super important. And, um, we have a data privacy team, um, and that data privacy team, um, consists of I T staff, curriculum and instruction. Um, staff, so Crystal's on the team, we've got an instructional coach on the team. We really want to look to make sure that anything we're using with our students, um, and our staff as well, really protects their privacy, protects our teachers' privacy. Um, and protects the safety of our network. So we work hard together to make sure that those digital resources really adhere to our standards and adhere to the law. Um, so if a teacher, for example, wants to use a new resource with their students. Um, they send us a request and we meet and we vet the request, we look at their data privacy, um, policy. And we compare it to, like I said, the the legal things that we're committed to and also just our standards to make sure we're putting the safest and best tools in front of our students. Um, even if something passes, just just saying like, oh, their data privacy policy looks really good, green light, you can use this. We really want to make sure we're not oversharing, um, because that's an important thing for us to know and and teach, uh, our our staff and our students about as well. We, just because somebody asks you for something, does it mean you have to share it? That's a way we can protect our own privacy as well. So that kind of leads into this idea of data minimization, which Kate will speak about.
So data minimization and the Power School update kind of go hand in hand. Um, one of the. Um, goals that we have is on the data privacy team is to make sure that we're minimizing the amount of data that we're sharing with these third-party companies. And with educational tools. And the less data you share with them, you know, the last chance, um, if you do have a cybersecurity incident. That, you know, that data is out there. Um, so when we're telling or having teachers, uh, use the tool that we've got, you know. Sometimes we say, just use the first name and the last initial. Um, so you have less of those identifiers out there on those tools. Um, so with Power School, we heard about the cybersecurity incident, um, that we had in the end of December. Um, our district does not house any social security numbers within Power School. Um, because of data minimization, that information is not necessary for D P I, for. Um, our federal reports, we never even collect that. Um, so the information we have in Power School. In those specific tables that were targeted was all just our directory data, basically.
Um, that people already have access to?
Well, that we, it's first name, last name, address, part of our policy allows us to share directory data. But we still do that, you know, kind of gated. We don't want to just have all that information out there, so we're, you know, careful about sharing that. Um, but through our policy, we say we can share that. Um, even though. That data, we didn't have any data, um, that was in the cybersecurity incident incident, um. That would require us to notify our students and staff. We are having Power School, um, Power School offered for free to have, um, experience. Provide free identity and credit monitoring services to all the current informer students and educators. That information, um, was part of that cybersecurity incident. So they'll be receiving some emails in the next couple of weeks, um, saying how they can sign up for that, um, and. Just so they are in the loop, we want to keep our families safe. Um, and I think Power School's doing a great job. They're going above and beyond for like a district like us that did not have any of those, you know, data elements. Taken, so I feel good. Uh, it was a little scary there for a little while, but.
Yeah, I mean, so, yeah, circling back to like the fact that, you know, we don't want to overshare, we're super careful about vetting the tools and resources that we use. That whole process has really been an education for for our team and for our staff. So moving on, you know, to the next point. Um, we continue to need to educate ourselves about all these kinds of attempts from, you know, phishing emails to. Spoofing emails and all, there's a whole dictionary.
And they happen all the time.
They happen all the time, so the best defense for us is is not just those technical things that we have in place. But we call it, we call ourselves human firewalls, like you have to know that people will try to socially engineer their way into getting this information and. And again, it's it's that education piece, we have to really, really be watching out for it and people are asking really great questions when they're suspicious of something. Um, and that's part of our education as well. Another, um, thing that we're.
Do y'all punk the staff? We do that at the state, they send them like, ooh, you passed, you know, but like, they'll get you. Do you do that?
Do some.
There are, there are rooms where you can do some training and then part of that training.
No, these are just like, you click on this.
Yeah.
Bust it.
Workshop that.
Not that teachers need that, but it's actually like a good awareness thing, like, oh crap. Yeah, I should have read the full email address or something.
Okay, like don't provide your self-security number.
Oh, no, there's like a little more.
Don't touch anything.
That's where I work for companies that have done the same thing. Like if you, you do it three times, you get some special training.
Exactly, exactly. Okay, sorry.
We've initiated multi-factor authentication for staff so that if, um, something is, um. Wrong with your your password, that you have to have another step to to actually get into any of your accounts, so. Um, that's been going well, um, and we continue to educate our students just like we have, um, in protecting their own privacy. Making sure that they understand the importance of passwords and keeping their personally identifiable information, um, safe and secure and private as well. Um, aside from just general online safety things too about how to keep yourself safe when you are, uh, using the air.
We have encryption if pupil data is in the email.
Their email encrypted?
Yeah.
The question, if so. Okay, continuous improvement. Um, database decisions are super important to us, so we focus our efforts. Um, on creating systems and procedures that really can, you know, benefit, um. All of us based on the the common things that come up. Um, we support, uh, professional development, so we, um. Ourselves on our team, we are leading sessions for, um, our colleagues. We are supporting, um, people, uh, making sure they can get hooked up when our presenters come in, so we have all sorts of different levels of support with professional development. Um, and the Future Ready Team, as we talked about a little bit earlier, has four main focal points. Uh, we are definitely talking about A I, um, literacy for staff and students. We continue to work on digital citizenship and make sure those lessons are woven into, um, everything that. That we do, um, K twelve, um, as far as like all the different like curriculum areas, um. We just want to make sure that we are continuously modeling, um, um, those digital citizenship skills regardless of, um. Of what course we teach and regardless of what grade we teach. We also, um, focus on accessibility. We want to make sure that our students can learn everything they. Uh, want to learn and share everything they know about what they've learned and in whatever way that they need to. Um, and finally, we, um, focus some of our attention on, um, embedding those computer science standards again into. Different grade levels, into different curricular areas. Um, and specifically, we're on year two. Um, of our newer, um, computer science course at the high school and we're continuing to see, um, increases in enrollment in that as well as the kids. Grow up through our programs. Um, communication, um, is another, um, commitment that we are also committed to as a, as a district technology team. Um, we use our help desk ticketing system to communicate, of course, we get information when things aren't working, but we can also. Um, respond back to the requester and give them information of things to try or things we've tried, so that's a nice back and forth, um, tool for us to be able to communicate. Um, we make sure our stakeholders have the information they need if there are issues or upcoming events that. Might affect them, we want to make sure that we're communicating those in a timely manner. Um, and we also have, um, teacher tech leaders at each building to provide some onsite support, so they really do a good job communicating when things are coming up. Um, at the different building levels and they can just help like with really timely things as well. So they're really a part of our communication piece. Alright, equitable decision-making, um, is another pillar that, or another commitment that we're focused on. Um, in an effort to help, um, with, um, saving us some money, we continuously review and research our use of equipment. Um, an example is that, um, we, um, realize that we can, um. We could maintain, um, some laptops at the elementary level, for example, beyond their typical four-year life cycle. So historically, we would. You know, buy a new laptop, lease it for four years and then buy another new laptop after four years and we just have this four-year life cycle. And if our equipment is in good repair and we can safely and logistically use that equipment beyond that typical life cycle. We've been able to do that to save quite a bit of money. Um, and we, again, continue to research less expensive solutions. Um, without sacrificing security, of course, and we want to make sure that, uh, our students are able to use all the tools as well. Um.
Jump in on this.
Sure.
It's running. Um. Talking about elementary level, trying to get stuff to be used longer than it's expected to be. Are you also taking any inputs from staff to use those devices to make sure all the programs and everything are working? Properly that. You know, they're actually usable beyond.
You mean the the computers are or the application?
Computers, programs, sometimes programs don't work because the computer's outdated or vice versa. So are you taking input from staff on that too and and not just. Pushing them all longer? Is there input?
I mean, our Future Ready Team was actually, uh, has representatives from the the teacher groups, um. I mean, our future ready team was actually, uh, has representatives from the, the teacher groups, um.
From each building, right?
Building and, um, yeah, and I was, I met with a, a staff member today who was expressing some concerns and we wanted to make sure that we had, you know, if something wasn't working properly, we had plans in place, you know, spare computers that could be swapped out if something was broken or whatnot, but um, yeah, we've done, we've done quite a bit of work to make sure that those things are, like I said earlier, like logistically able to continue on, so. Um, yeah.
Can I ask a follow-up to that? I've sort of mentioned this to Casey before, but how how do we assess the applications that we have purchased and whether they are being utilized and if they're not being utilized, maybe no longer purchasing them anymore? Like, how do you assess that on like an annual basis?
So for most things, we can, we can find usage data.
Okay, like do you do that on a regular basis and assess that each year?
Especially for ones we purchase.
Okay.
Any purchase tools, we do that.
Okay.
Yeah, and actually that leads us, you know, to that second bullet there, so thank you for mentioning that. We want to make sure that.
Ask one more question too. I know at one of our listening sessions, it was brought up and I know, I think that's why Ed was saying it. So I think some of the concerns that were brought up is that not all, if we're keeping some computers longer, um, some are different than the newer ones, and so then teachers aren't able to just give directions to the students because they don't match perfectly. And so then there's that, um, struggle, I would say, um, with doing it with an entire class, so then they brought up maybe, and again, I'm not asking for a solution right now, I'm just, I guess, presenting what was told to us in the listening session. Um, instead of maybe every student having a tablet or a computer, maybe is it better financially to go back to the carts where they are updated, they are fully functioning, the batteries are good, everything is going well? Because again, there's some discrepancies with all the computers and the tablets.
Reliability issue potentially and so do we need to go back to not one-on-one and more having carts so that we know what we can expect?
Yeah.
Is that, yes, we've talked, I did follow.
Yeah. Some of the people that, so you're just speaking, running out with someone listening who was in on that conversation as well. And, um, I think there was a little bit of confusion about like the mismatching computers, the way we intended it to be set up was that all the kindergarten and first graders would have the same computers across the district and then second through, you know, levels would have the same computers. But there might be some, some confusion in like the systems of, like I said, kind of that swapping out of spares and things like that. Um, and, and all the computers should get regular updates. What we really struggle with is the, the, uh, procedures, you know, at the end of the day, when the computers get shut down, they need to be shut all the way down and so I know, I mean, speaking as a teacher myself, I would be like, oh, it's, it's time for gym and we'd slap computers shut and maybe stick them on the cart, maybe not, so some of those procedures, I think, lead to some of that. So we, yeah, so we definitely hear those concerns and we continue to try to, try to figure that out with teachers to see like what, what are procedures that we can help support you with and what are actual like technology fixes that we need to address as well. Um, so going back to this, just a couple more things to think about, um. Again, like Amy said, we want to make sure to maximize the resources that we pay for, so there's always going to be that like shiny new thing out there. A lot of times companies will say, you know, we can use it for free. Well, typically you can use it for free because eventually they want you to pay for it. Um, you can use it for free because maybe they're taking your data. And so, you know, free isn't always a good thing, but we do, we do invest in some really robust tools, you know, C S O and Google and Adobe and things like that. And we really want to spend the next, you know, year or so, like beyond really highlighting all the things that, that those tools can do, because we want to make sure we're we're maximizing what we're paying for as well. Um, and along with that too, again, with those robust tools, finding that tools, um, are, that we're using really do offer a lot of great accessibility features within them too, so we want to highlight those things as well to make sure that our students and their teachers understand how to, how to really maximize those things again, so that kids can share what they know or they can learn about anything they like. Alright, oh, that's it. Those are our four things. So thank you for the questions. Is there anything else anybody wanted to?
Thank you.
Thank you, Keaton.
I've been pushing Erin really hard. There's technology, it's a huge expense that's out there, so I'm really pushing Erin, um, I say, say you can save money, she says a lot, and I say a lot. As you find something, they say find more, so it's been really good pushing back in our team. It's really hard, like I know a lot of people, a lot of parents, they thought the survey of technology wasn't a big deal to them and they're like, oh, why do you have a one-on-one? And then I tell them, go to McDonald's, try to order a meal, and you do it unless you do it on a tablet. Go and try and work at McDonald's, like, um, the future is in technology. We, everybody needs to be computer savvy, although we don't set our students up for that, they will fail. So I just appreciate the fact that Erin, yeah, extending computers out, you know, she says maybe we can get one, I think we can get two years out of it and then making sure those computers are consistent, but it's, Erin's had a lot on her plate and she's set up.
Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes my report.
Well, thank you very much. A reminder, our next regular board meeting is March seventeenth, St. Patrick's Day. If your iris, step into the pallor. Uh, we will begin that evening also at four thirty P M. in a closed session. I want to sincerely thank you for being here, a long day and long, a longer evening for some of you and we really appreciate your attendance. Motion adjourned.
Motion adjourned.
Motion second to adjourn if there are any further discussion. None of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.